I'd like to call the Tuesday, November sixteenth Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Mr. Rado, would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mumgarne, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have an affidavit and publication on file?
We do.
The current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the inside the entry door when you came in. We got a special presentation tonight. We have two oaths of office to give. From in the Police Department, I'd like to invite Chief Widdit up and make the introductions and then we'll do the oath. Chief.
Good evening, City Council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I was told that by some former chiefs that some of the best moments of achievement is when you get to either hire some people or you get to promote some people, and that definitely is true. Two great individuals I'm going to introduce you to tonight and a pleasure for you to be here. We're going to start with Matt.
Right behind you.
He's right here. How you doing?
Good.
Training going okay?
Yes, it's going great.
This is Officer Matt Hay. He has almost completed his training. He will graduate Friday from the SDLA. It is quite intense, so he looks a little tired. It's been a long week for him and he's got a few more days to go. We're excited to have you here. Matt, I think, is here tonight with his father, Greg, Tonda's mother, Carrie. Is Carrie here? Carrie, his sister, Ryan Heim, the boyfriend, and Sophia. She cannot get okay. A little bit about Matt. Matt was born and raised in the Platte Smith area, graduated from Conestogee Senior High in Murray, Nebraska. He went on to earn his bachelor's degree in criminalology and criminal justice from UNO in 2017. Before becoming a part of the Papillion Police Family, Matt had a variety of jobs in the hospitality industry. He can pretty much talk to anyone about anything. Matt will be graduating, as I just mentioned, from the twenty-week Serpentine Douglas Law Enforcement Academy this Friday, after which he will begin preparation for his fourteen-week field training program. Please join me in welcoming Matt to the city of Papillion as a sworn police officer.
The people want to take pictures. They can come up.
Yeah, if you want to take pictures, please. Do you want to have your loose penny?
Let's do the oath. We'll do the oath first. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Matt Hay.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
The Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
Allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
I do not advocate.
Nor my member of.
Nor my member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or, sorry.
Organization.
Organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that such during, and that during such time.
And that during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor me become a member of.
Or become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. We've got an official one for you to sign. Hit on the badge. Thank you. Feel free to call up whoever you'd like to pin your badge. We got another one. Two in one night. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. You have a chief portrait. Come on up. I should say lieutenant for a couple more minutes. I am incredibly proud to introduce Orrin Orchard as the next Deputy Police Chief for the Papillion Police Department. Deputy Chief Orchard distinguished himself from the other candidates in a lengthy and difficult selection process and brings a plethora of experience, as well as technical and tactical proficiency, to the deputy chief position. Aside from almost twenty-six years of law enforcement experience, including more than sixteen in which he served as a member of the Papillion Police Department Command Staff, Deputy Chief Orchard holds twenty-nine years of military experience, having served in both the United States Navy and the United States Army Reserves. Moreover, he is a graduate at the FBI National Academy Class 272 and possesses a Bachelor of Arts degree from Brigham Young University. Additionally, he possesses a graduate level certificate in criminal justice from the University of Virginia. During Orrin's law enforcement tenure with the Papillion Police Department, he has served as patrol officer, school resource officer, narcotics detective, dare instructor, field training officer, and lieutenant for both the Administrative and Uniformed Services Divisions. For the last several years, he has served as the Administrative Services Commander overseeing the Crime Prevention Unit and CLIA Accreditation Investigations Unit, Clerical Records Unit, School Resource Officer Program, DARE, and the Property and Evidence Function. He also chairs our department's training and award committees. Due to our command structure, Deputy Chief Orchard acquired a strong foundation in police-related administrative duties to include budget, payroll, internal affairs investigations, new officer hiring, CLIA accreditation, project development, digital records management, training, crisis management, and policy creation and implementation. Regarding Orrin's long military career, he first entered military service as a Navy corpsman in nineteen eighty-nine until nineteen ninety-seven, leading to joining the United States Army Reserve Military Police Corps, which I think was at my urging. Which I've heard about a few times. In his time as a reservist, Orrin promoted the rank of Staff Sergeant E6 before earning a direct commission of the rank of Second Lieutenant in two thousand and four. During his tenure in the reserves, he deployed four times, three times, three of those deployments into combat environments. He deployed once to Kosovo, twice to Iraq, and once to Afghanistan, where he served as the company commander for the Forty-Fifth Military Police Division. Orrin ultimately retired in two thousand and eighteen as a field grade officer, reaching the rank of Major. Lastly, and most importantly, Orrin is a devout husband and father to six children. He speaks fluent Spanish and will be an essential part in several important chief-level projects going forward. Simply put, Orrin was the best choice for the appointment to deputy police chief and is poised to be an integral part of the command staff now and into the future.
Are you just saying along the oath? I state your name.
I, Orrin Orchard.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of deputy police chief.
Perform the duties of deputy police chief.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Nor I member of.
Nor I member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
And that during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I didn't know I was going to have to speak, but.
You're one of the bosses. You got to talk.
I guess. Let's keep it brief. You know, when I became a police officer twenty-six years ago, you know, I did it. I graduated college and I thought, what am I going to do with my life? And I thought that I would be interested in doing something that could give back to the community and do something positive and something good. So I thought, police officer is something that I think I can do well and that I would enjoy doing. I never imagined that twenty-six years later, I'd be standing here as a deputy chief. And I want to thank Chief Widdit for his faith and trust in me, for everybody that was a member of the selection process, for the mayor, city council, for everybody that has given me this opportunity. And most importantly, I want to introduce and thank my family, who, as Chief Widdit said, is probably the most important thing in my life. And that's, this is my wife, Lisa, my youngest daughter, Amara. I have five boys. Two of them are with me. Coleman and Creighton are here. And I have three other boys. My oldest is working and couldn't come. I have a son that's in college at Brigham Young University. And I have one that's in Africa on a mission, so they're not able to be with us tonight. But they're all part of what made me who I am and part of what I believe in, so I thank them. Yes, I'd like to have my sons, Coleman and Creighton, come up to do the penning. So, and then when they're done, my wife can put the badge on, I think. Is that right? All right. Make sure it comes straight.
It's starting.
Yeah, it's pinned on the backside of it.
How many candidates are there in the process? Really important for people to know this is not through an internal vote.
Absolutely.
It's a private open process.
Absolutely not. There was approximately ten, I believe, that started in the process. I believe there was seven or eight that went through the interrogatory phase and then they're down to five for the civil service portion. And I can, I've seen all the scores and I can tell you that Deputy Chief Orchard far exceeded the other scores in that process.
Thank you. Green Administrator Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, just real quick. For the families that are here, if you want to sit through an entire council meeting, you can, but don't feel obligated and don't feel bad. We won't feel bad, believe me.
All right, just a reminder that the city offices will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday on Thursday, November twenty-fifth, and Friday, November twenty-sixth. I hope that everyone has a happy, blessed, and safe Thanksgiving. City staff has been working with MAPPA regarding the city council ward redistricting. The city staff was able to speed up some of the front-end processing, which now allows the introduction of the redistricting ordinance on December seventh. At the regular meeting, a second special reading is going to be scheduled for the following week, either on the fourteenth, fifteenth, or sixteenth. Details will come out later this week or next week. And then the third reading will be scheduled for December twenty-first at the regular reading, a regular council meeting. Update on the city council remodeling project. Work is proceeding on schedule and within budget as authorized by the council, as long as no unforeseen issues derail us at the end. The general contractor should be done in completing his work by the end of December. We are planning for the delivery and installation of items in storage and new items the first two weeks of January with staff moving back in the last two weeks of January. And then lastly, there were some ribbon cuttings that I and a few other members of staff were able to attend and welcome these businesses into the community. Both Adapt Chiropractic back on November fourth, as well as ROC Technologies on November twelfth. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven A zero N's.
Motion passes. The next four items are related. Item F1, Ordinance nineteen forty-six. An ordinance to annex certain real estate to the city of Papillion, Nebraska and provide for an effective date. Is there a motion to approve ordinance nineteen forty-six? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Klug. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven A zero N's.
Motion passes. F2, Ordinance nineteen forty-seven. An ordinance to change the official zoning map of the city of Papillion in accordance with Section two oh five thirty-two of the Papillion Municipal Code to adopt a zoning map and to apply existing or future zoning regulations, property use regulations, building ordinances, electrical ordinances, plumbing ordinances, and all other regulatory ordinances of the city of Papillion pursuant to Nebraska revised Statute sixteen nine oh one and to provide for an effective date. Is there a motion to approve ordinance nineteen forty-seven? Motion by Councilman Gaines. Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven A zero N's.
Motion passes. Item F3, Ordinance nineteen forty-eight. An ordinance to detach certain real estate from the corporate limits of the city of Papillion, Nebraska and to provide for an effective date. Is there a motion to approve ordinance nineteen forty-eight? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Sunday. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven A zero N's.
Motion passes. And F4, Ordinance nineteen forty-nine. An ordinance to change the official zoning map of the city of Papillion in accordance with Section two oh five thirty-two of the Papillion Municipal Code to adopt a zoning map and to apply existing or future zoning regulations, property use regulations, building ordinances, electrical ordinances, plumbing ordinances, and all other regulatory ordinances of the city of Papillion pursuant to Nebraska revised Statute sixteen nine oh one and to provide for an effective date. Is there a motion to approve ordinance nineteen forty-nine? Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by Councilman Ingberg. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven A zero N's.
Motion passes. F5, Ordinance nineteen fifty-two. An ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to LI Limited Industrial for the property legally described as attractive land located in the southeast corner. Section twenty-five Township fourteen north, range eleven east of the six PM. Serpentine County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of South one hundred and thirty-second Street and Highway three seventy. The applicant is NP Dodge Black Elk Industrial. Is there a motion to approve ordinance nineteen fifty-two? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Klug. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven A zero N's.
Motion passes. Item F6, Ordinance nineteen fifty-six. An ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. Is there a motion to approve ordinance nineteen fifty-six? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Ingberg. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven A zero N's.
Motion passes. F7, Resolution R twenty-one zero two one five. A resolution to approve a request for a final plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in the southeast corner, Section twenty-five Township fourteen north, range eleven east of the six PM. Serpentine County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner, South one hundred and thirty-second Street and Highway three seventy. The applicant's NP Dodge. Again, it's Black Elk Industrial. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-one zero two one five? Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents or opponents? I will note that the applicant is here. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven A zero N's.
Motion passes. F8, Resolution R twenty-one zero two one six. This is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a request for a special use permit to allow commercial recreation controlled impact as a permitted use on the property legally described as tax lot A one B one A, A one B one C, and A one B one D. Section twenty-three Township fourteen, range twelve, generally located at eight forty-one Terra Plaza. The applicant is Elegant Edge Events, the fireside. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Anybody want to speak in favor? Is the applicant here? Okay. Any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-one zero two one six? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Gaines. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven A zero N's.
Motion passes. Next is F9, Resolution R twenty-one zero two one seven. Public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve the Second Amendment to the three seventy North Mixed Use Development Agreement for the property legally described as lots one through seven inclusive, lots ten through fourteen inclusive, lots sixteen and seventeen, and outlots A and B, three seventy north, lots one and two, three seventy north replat one, lots two through seven, three seventy north replat two, outlots A and B, three seventy north replat three and lot one, and outlot A, three seventy replat north four, generally located on the northwest corner of Highway three seventy and Highway fifty. The applicant's Nodle Companies. And it's a public hearing. I'll open it. Proponents? Proponents? And if you'd state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Ted Zetman, Nodle Companies in Exarban Village, Mayor, members of the council. This is simply just to allow vehicles to be displayed around the signs of the automotive. And it's very similar to what was approved by the council back in the spring of twenty twenty for similar, actually in that development as well. So we, I think the report is favorable and we are going to comply with all that. Ask for your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents or opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-one zero two one seven? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Ingberg. Any discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven A zero N's.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item F10, Resolution R twenty-one zero two two one. This is a resolution to approve the posting of the annual occupation tax report on the city's website. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-one zero two two one? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Sunday. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven A zero N's.
Motion passes. F11, Resolution R twenty-one zero two two two. A resolution to approve an application for license to sell permissible fireworks at retail from Papillion La Vista Spirit Football. Leah Jo-Kimpson, manager for the twenty twenty-one winter fireworks season, which is December twenty-first to the thirty-first. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R twenty-one zero two two two? Motion by Councilwoman Klug, second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Welcome. If you'd state your name and address for the record. And I think I messed up the name of the manager.
Hi, yes. Leah Jo-Kimpson is the manager on that one there. My name is Brian Edwards, Papillion Fireworks. Our address here is five oh one Olson Drive. Same location as our fireworks stand will be. Just ask for your approval. Be doing the same thing we've been doing at that same location for years now.
Thank you. Any council discussion? Or any other proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Mr. Sunday.
I'd like everybody to know that he's very much opposed to this. But I'm going to vote for it anyway.
All right. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven A zero N's.
Motion passes. Next is F12, Resolution R twenty-one zero zero nine four. A resolution to approve Highway fifty speed limit adjustments. And just a note for the record, it was a June first council meeting. There was a motion to approve this. Motion was by Councilwoman Klug, second was by Councilman Jaworski. But then there was a substitute motion to table it indefinitely, and then it went to the Public Safety Committee for discussion, and now that's occurred, so now it's back. So we already have the motion and the second from the June meeting, so we are at proponents and opponents. Anybody want to speak in favor or against? Any council discussion? Who's on Safe, Public Safety Committee? You want to make a brief statement about it? Just to tie it back?
Yeah, so we had our, had our meeting prior to the last council meeting and it was pretty much unanimous that we all agreed that that particular corridor, it's already been changed, I believe, south by Springfield. This kind of makes it consistent all the way through that corridor until you get to Highway three seventy, which I think it reduces down to fifty at that location. So Public Safety Committee was in support of it.
And it was actually a request by the state.
Correct.
Department of Roads. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven A zero N's.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items. No committees have met in the last couple of weeks. Any comments from the floor? Seen no comments from the floor. Any council comments? Just a couple of things. It was mentioned we've had a couple of different ribbon cuttings, which is still good to see. And what's incre-
And what's encouraging is there are small businesses that are opening, and that's what we continue to have since COVID. Had a good Veterans Day ceremony at American Legion. Mayor Kindig and myself did a joint proclamation as part of that. And then Papillion South Navy Junior ROTC also had a Veterans Day event that we participated in. And I think the only other thing is a reminder that Administrator Green had already mentioned, but we did have a mayor's hotline request asking, are we ever going to move back into